I'd like to call the evening session of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order, and welcome everyone here. Good to see everyone, and also I want to welcome those who are watching on our live stream channel on YouTube. Welcome to you as well. Just wanted to say that we opened this morning with invocation and the pledge. We will not repeat that this evening, but we did that this morning. And then I'll touch on the six board priorities, which is heavy on land use, which is one of our priorities tonight. When I say heavy, we've got one item. Also educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, public safety, and our county employees. A couple announcements to make. We had some boards that we had more advocates than we had open positions, and I want to announce the, we completed ballots this morning, turned them in, and they've been tallied, and I'm going to announce the results of those now. They are, first with Child Fatality Prevention Team. Matt Thompson was reappointed for a three-year term. The Fire Protection Services District Commission, Kendall Hocutt, Jeremy Daughtry, and Chad Ward were reappointed for two-year terms. Rob Williams was appointed to the Planning Board to fill an unexpired term ending in February of 2028. Alicia Whitehurst was appointed for a three-year term to the Tourism Authority and for the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. We did not have a majority, a candidate with the majority of the votes, so we have completed ballots that has listed the top two vote-getters, and we will announce those when they're tallied at the end of this meeting and during board comments, I will announce that. All right, those are the appointments. That, the first item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda we need to make?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with the following adjustments. We add item number four, the continued ballpark discussion in partnership with the town of Smithfield, and that would move manager reports and comments, and board reports and comments. So item number four will be added as ballpark discussion.
All right.
It's on there, isn't it?
It's not on the agenda. Yeah, it's not on the agenda for this public.
Okay. It's on our list. I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? The agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comments, and these are for items that are not on the agenda. And I believe we have someone that Mr. Hester would like to recognize for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I wanted to introduce a young man that reached out to me probably a week or two ago, and we spent some time together last week, and he's at Johnston Community College, 16 years old, very impressive, is very interested in public service, and is involved in the student government at Johnston Community College, and also started his own 4-H Club, Mr. Stovall. I know that's near and dear to your heart and a lot of other folks here on the board, but I just wanted to, he wanted to come tonight, and if you don't mind, can I bring him up?
Sure, absolutely.
Let him tell you the good things he's doing.
Fantastic.
Hello.
Hello. Man, y'all are twins.
Right. He did his research.
He holds Rick's job.
Welcome to the team.
Looking for a successor.
Good to meet you all. I have never come to one of these before, but I've recently just kind of had a calling to just kind of get into public service, and so I just started looking into ways that I can actively participate in that at 16, so it's really cool. I thank you guys for having me. I see it's a public event, so.
Nice.
Yeah. I do go to JCC.
Tell us your name.
Oh, Gabriel Robertson.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm 16, January 3rd. I go to JCC, this is my third year there, and then I have two more. I'm majoring in applied engineering, but I want to go to a four-year for international development, and one day maybe even hold office like you guys are right now. So that's the goal, and yeah, thank you guys.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You already have the look and the speak, speaking down pat, so you're on the way.
All right, anyone else here wishing to speak during public comment? All right, then, no emails this afternoon, okay? All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is case 2506. This is additional zoning district hearing. I will now open that public hearing, and I will call on Brad Newton to come forward and introduce the action force.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board. This case before you this evening, case 2506, if you will recall, was tabled at your last or at your August meeting. However, we have duly advertised again and made all notices as per general statute and county ordinance as required, being our adjacent property owners or adjacent owners' notices as well as posting of the site on top of that. So this evening, your consideration is petition to rezone 12.56 acres located on Pierce Road near the intersection Cleveland Road and Cleveland Township for agricultural residential conditional or industrial to conditional zoning district. The owner is G. Paul Sherrill Jr. and the applicant is Gray Star Development East. Their conditional zoning request does involve various heavy industrial uses. You will see at your, each of your chairs this evening, there's a, the table of uses associated with business or business industrial uses from our ordinance, highlighted or marked indicated in red or items or uses that are excluded per, as part of the conditions to this rezoning, and there are a number of those. Anything remaining permitted by right listed in that table would be permitted, if approved, would be permitted for this particular site. Once again, conditional zoning is site plan specific, predicated on that site plan as well as any conditions that are proposed by the applicant or those proposed by the board and agreed to by the applicant as well. So the property once again is zoned agricultural residential, and it's currently undeveloped. Surrounding zoning is agricultural residential and used for such purposes, and interstate highway interchange overlay and used for a myriad of commercial and industrial uses. Traffic concerns, Pierce Road has a volume of about 1,400 vehicles per day. This is a 2022 count, and this portion of Pierce Road does not appear on a previous comprehensive transportation plan, has needed improvement. However, we do know that this area is showing tremendous amount of growth, and we do know that Cleveland Road to the northwest, traveling northwest is slated to be improved as for our current, our newly adopted transportation plan. With regard to our land use plan, this area is designated as a regional mixed-use center place type, and this is intended to be a center of activity that includes a mix of retail, restaurant, service, office, civic and institutional uses. A portion of the lot is, does lie within that interstate highway interchange overlay, however, is an extremely small portion and really would not have any impact on the development or really, just really wouldn't have any impact. For your consideration, you will see a site plan provided by the applicant. The area, it is a rendering of the site as well as a traffic, a limited traffic study that was produced by an engineer, qualified engineer, and I'm sure that they would address any issues with that as well. At this time, staff is glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Newton?
On this list, anything that says a special use, it would have to, of course, come back to us.
It would have to come back, yes, sir.
What are some of the industrial zoning businesses that are already existing close to this location right now?
So we have, if you look, really do kind of do south of this site, that fronts on, one fronts on NC 42, this is the Merit Properties, I'm sure you're aware of that, which is kind of a, almost in, more of a commercial flex, commercial slash industrial, that allows for really light industrial uses. We've seen there's a number of those facilities, a number of those suites that are currently rented and were being in process of being upfitted. We're seeing things of, or uses such as mechanical contractors, to that extent, small distribution, meaning more retail level distribution. We even have an athletic, indoor athletic complex there. There's, I think, a dance studio's coming, larger scale dance studio, so those are all permitted uses with, as part of air conditional zoning. There is another site across Cleveland Road, if you went kind of to northeast, across Cleveland Road from this site, there's another commercial or industrial flex facility that is under development or at least under review now, and we will, we expect that to begin construction later this year. As you go southern to the more southeast on Cleveland Road, just before the interchange on the more, I guess, southeast or southwest quadrant of that, of the Cleveland Road interchange with I-40, there's another industrial facility that's there once again permitted by right as it's in that IHI overlay. But that is, that is, those are, I guess, the nearest to the type of development that's proposed here. Obviously, there's other, other commercial uses nearby.
All right, any other questions?
Water and sewer, both available?
Water is available and sewer is available, but once again, your allocation for that does not trigger until the permit is issued. Plans are approved, permit are issued, there would be some time before that could take place. But my understanding there is adequate capacity. This type of facility typically would not be a large generator or generate a large amount of flow.
And I would just say, you provided us, I guess, the full table of uses.
Yes, sir.
I guess the ones that have been excluded by the applicant in red, and then the others are for us to take a look at and see if there's any others, although which are still, I don't know how many that is, but there's still quite a few.
It's a few, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? There's a lot to look at, so. All right, if there's not any other questions for Mr. Newton, I will call on the applicant to come forward and present any information that you feel is relevant and necessary for us to make our decision tonight.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Tom Johnson. I'm an attorney with Williams Mullen at 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant. I did not get involved with this project until after the planning board meeting, but we did a lot of work after that based upon the comments we heard and input we heard at the planning board meeting. Particularly, you focused on the table of uses you've got in front of you. We made significant changes to the number of uses that were excluded and submitted a revised application to the planning department to take care of that. And the other thing we did is we engaged McAdams to do a traffic study. Traffic study wouldn't be required for this project because it would not meet the threshold, but we went ahead and did it anyway because one had not been done recently, so it was actually a study based upon actual counts, and did that as part of this. And I'll have Nate from McAdams come up in just a few minutes and talk about what he found, what they found in terms of doing that analysis. But first, I want to have Tanner Hicklin from Gray Star come up and just kind of introduce himself and Gray Star and what this project will be, and then I've got a presentation that I will go through in just a minute. So Tanner, if you could come up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tanner Hicklin. I'm at 555 Fettville Street in Raleigh. Thank you all for the time this evening. Just a quick background on Gray Star. We're an owner, operator, developer, and manager of commercial properties. We happen to be headquartered here in the Carolinas. Even more locally, we have, for a long time, had a huge presence in greater Raleigh. We have over 600 team members here in the Raleigh area. We've done over a dozen ground-up developments and are the largest manager of communities in the greater Raleigh area. And then drilling down even more locally, in case Gray Star sounds familiar, our Technology Drive project, if you guys are familiar, we're hoping to kick off kind of later this year. It's right around the corner from, from the subject, right off 42, right off Glen Road and Technology Drive, if you know that area. So the subject's going to be very similar in terms of design, Class A image, and sort of our target businesses and profile. Just side note, we do a lot of business in a lot of municipalities and counties all over the state and beyond, and Johnston County's been wonderful. You guys have made for a very smooth permitting process, so we're excited about that one and hope to continue finding ways to grow here. So our goal with this project and really any project is always, hey, let's find where's demand from businesses, whether that's local, regional, or national, that have needs, and how can we design projects, configure projects to meet their needs while also meeting the needs of the communities that they serve? And so, as Tom said, and hopefully you guys will see tonight, we've made some, based on feedback we've heard from the county, based on feedback we've heard from the community, we've made some design changes, we've made some use restrictions to hopefully align with y'all's vision for growth for the corridor. So available with any questions, and thank you all again for the time tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Hicklin? Thanks.
Thanks, Chairman.
And it was mentioned earlier, talk about the Merit Project, and I'll get into this further, but this is similar to what we're doing here. It's the type of uses and in general, what we plan on doing here. You know, this, again, we've used the name Johnston Business Center. Here's the current zoning in the surrounded area. Brastin touched on this. Part of this property is in the interstate highway interchange district. This used to be permitted by right in that portion of the property, but obviously it's not enough to develop, as you can see from this slide, so that's why we're coming forward to rezone it. And you can see the proximity, the reason it becomes important to have this type of light industrial property available is proximity to I-40. The Veterans Parkway, 40 interchange, as well as the Cleveland Road and I-40 interchange, so that folks can get in and out. And there'll be a lot of service-type businesses that will be involved in this, so they need that accessibility to be able to get in and out. As said, as said in the staff report, this proposed zoning is consistent with the new comprehensive plan that you adopted as a board. It's consistent with the surrounding area because it was, as was mentioned earlier, there are a lot of these light industrial-type projects. They're simply driven by the fact of the proximity to I-40. We did come in and add a lot of protections that weren't there. I mean, we went through and, as I'll show you in a minute, significant number of additional uses we excluded as part of the process. And, you know, as stated in the staff report, it's consistent with the Johnston County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it's within the regional mixed-use center, and it's intended to support employment, retail, service, office, and civic uses. And again, part of it still already falls in the overlay. Here are the uses. The ones on the left are the ones that we had when we went to planning board that we excluded. We went through and added more than double the number of excluded uses to our application, hearing the concerns of community about noise or anything that would cause difficulty along those lines. And one of the big ones we did is we eliminated trucking terminal because there was a lot of comment about, at the planning board, about 18-wheeler trucks coming in and out. Now, we may have some deliveries from an 18-wheeler truck, or a box truck, or UPS or FedEx. That's how things are delivered today. So they'll, you know, those types of deliveries may happen, but it's not a trucking terminal like you may see if you have an Amazon facility or something of that nature. That's not at all what the focus of this development is and what it's about, which, you know, excluding these uses shows that that is our intent. These are the examples. The Merit Development on the left, 42 Crossing, you know, very well done. This is the type of image that Gray Star intends to have here, and that image for the community. The others, Garner Commerce Center, which is off of 70, just two examples of what is intended to be done here. Target businesses, you know, the comment's been made, Johnston County's a big exporter of workers to Wake County, and we're designed, this project is designed to keep those jobs here, to support local businesses, keep jobs close to home, and also work with a diverse economy supported by a skilled workforce, which these businesses will do. You know, focusing on smaller, 20,000 to 40,000 square foot businesses, a lighter footprint, less traffic. The tenants will represent various things. It could be service, recreational assembly, training, light industrial uses, you know, a use that may have a front office but in the back have material supplies, maybe a small shop in the back where they would work, that kind of thing. Again, keeping more people here locally. They spend at the local restaurants and retail and services and help keep the jobs and the spending here. As Chris Johnson has said, every day, thousands of residents drive into Wake County for work. We're trying to create accessible jobs here to keep the jobs here rather than people commuting. Now, I wanted to show how this site is actually buffered from the existing residential. There's, to the west of this site, there's an 18-acre parcel that's owned by the Cheryl Place Homeowners Association. So it's homeowner's association property, undeveloped, a huge buffer between the project and any existing residential. But on top of that, we've agreed to do a more intensive Type C buffer in there anyways that we need, any locations where we need to do that. But being homeowner's association property, obviously it's common area and is not there for development. So this is, again, it's a perpetual natural buffer. Large part of that 18-acre tract is, has a pond and streams, it's wet area, not likely to be developed, which is probably why it ends up being the homeowner's association name. So that shows you that proximity, and this is a map that just basically shows the stream and the existing pond. The self-imposed buffers we're talking about, preserving existing vegetation to the greatest degree possible. We're going to do a Type C buffer, which is more stringent than would ordinarily be required in the areas where we need to do that. We're going to have a minimum 40-foot setback from Pierce Road plus landscape buffer and preserve vegetation. So basically, you end up with green screening to help with any noise, light, or visibility from the nearby residents. This is the information from the traffic study. I'm going to let, rather than me sit back and try to talk about what McAdams did, I'm going to have Nate come up and just speak to traffic and what they found in terms of their counts and analysis.
Good evening. My name is Nate Bokwen, Traffic Engineering Lead with McAdams. I'm addressed to 621 Hillsborough Street in Raleigh. So as was mentioned earlier, this project does not trigger the classification for threshold for typical TIA. That being said, we still went out, conducted a little bit of a reduced-down traffic study to be able to still get a good feel for how the site's going to operate in conjunction with the area intersections. I wanted to highlight a little bit of what our TIA thresholds are and kind of where we stand within those as well. So the county TIA threshold's 1,000 daily trips, NCDOT threshold's 3,000 daily trips. Our site, based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, is approximately 562, just under 565, daily trips. So we're quite a bit below, below that threshold, and within that Trip Generation Manual as well, ITE allows us to break out certain land use codes by the type of trip. With the light industrial being one that has a mix of those passenger vehicles and trucks, we were able to split those out to have a good indication of the actual number of trucks that are also utilizing the site. Based on those calculations, and again, this is straight from the ITE Trip Generation Manual, they indicated that there'd be 34 truck trips for a project of this size throughout the day. So that is throughout all, all of the day, and not just a peak hour there. Also wanted to dive into that number a little bit more. So the 34 truck trips, that's not saying 34 trucks, that is 34 truck trips. So essentially, half that number is the amount of trucks that would actually be utilizing the site. Also, within that number is all types of trucks that might be using the facility, whether that be a UPS truck, delivery truck that would serve any site, or a truck specific to the business that might, may be housed here. That is all, all types of trucks that would be utilized in the facility. So within the traffic study, we also looked at the distribution where folks would be likely to enter, enter and exit the area from. With, in my experience with truck trips, in particular, when you're looking at the trucks that would be serving the users of the project, we would anticipate that they would essentially try and get to from the highway as fast as possible. So that would be the interchanges. We're located in a great spot here, but we have multiple interchanges to our east and our southeast. So we would anticipate the majority, if not all, of the trucks to utilize that direction, entering and exiting, and not traveling down Pierce to our west. I do want to also caveat it again, when I say the majority of the trucks, again, the site will be served by just general UPS, FedEx-type delivery trucks that will be, I'm sure, going on their route along Pierce currently and still serving the facility. So those trucks would still be, be out there, but the new trips, new trucks that we would be adding out there, we would anticipate to be serving the site too from the east. Again, just looking at the fastest route to their commuter patterns. That being said, we do understand that when looking at the various type of users that would be coming to the facility, the employees themselves, there certainly might be some that would be traveling along Pierce from the west, coming up from Garner down Highway 50, or coming up from the south on 50, certainly. But wanted to just highlight that a little bit with the, understanding the concern surrounding the truck trips out there. So that being said, the map there on your screen shows the intersections that we included within our traffic study, the red dots being the existing intersections, the blue dots being our, the driveways analyzed within the study. We did find a very negligible increase in delay. I think the largest impact we saw was a three-second increase, which I would, with it still operating acceptably, that would be within the threshold that I would view as a driver would not see and actually notice that increase of delay. The majority of the increases that we were seeing were right around the one-second delay increase mark. So again, what we'd classify as a negligible increase. So that being said, based on those findings, we did not find a substantial impact to the operations out there because of the site. Again, going back to the TIA thresholds, that's why the thresholds are what they are, is because those are kind of the thresholds where we typically will start to see increases that substantiate impacts, and it's always good, though, to have some analysis here to back that up. So just wanted to highlight that a little bit, and I'll be here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Since 2020, there's been a great evolution in families' shopping habits. I wonder, in your work and your firm's work, have y'all developed any kind of impact that if you look at that map and you see the various clusters of homes, of what delivery trucks are the UPS, Amazon, those types of things? Has there been any work done to identify what kind of impact or increase in those type of trips that are taking place?
Not to my knowledge. It's hard to substantiate some of those just because it's, when we do a traffic count, we can split it out by the type of vehicle, but it's hard to really, especially when you get into some of the Amazon-type delivery vehicles, it's hard to really know who's an Amazon delivery versus, versus not.
Good.
That is, good question.
And so I just wanted to double check that whenever it says no roadway improvements required, that that doesn't mean you need to stop light or any of that at that intersection.
Correct, yes. We're in a really great location here. We have numerous NCDOT projects that have provided a lot of capacity. It's a It's a, that, I think that's part of the reason that some of those intersections are operating so well.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Nate.
There's a question earlier about utilities. This is a minimal utility user. We did on this slide a comparison between Flex Industrial, which is what we're talking about, versus multifamily and single family. As you can see with the Flex use, it's 5,000 gallons a day, you know, counting at 100 employees, 25 gallons per day per, times two shifts. Multifamily would be 96,000 gallons a day, single family would be 6480 per day if there were single family on this property. As far as stormwater is concerned, this site will be, obviously control any stormwater, so pre-imposed won't change. All runoff will be retained and treated on-site in an engineered facility. And site grading naturally slopes away from the residential neighborhoods, so that won't be a problem for them either. The other big thing is these types of uses, uses just don't impact infrastructure as much, but bring in property tax and sales tax revenue and employment, bring in jobs. So the important thing has been stated by the commissioners we pulled from the minutes before, that commercial, industrial and agriculture development demands much less in services for every dollar they generate in property taxes. It's there, you know, that's why it's essential that there be a balance in the growth, that residential's needed to attract, you know, are needed to attract business, provide a trained workforce, however, the current trend has leaned too much toward residential. This gives a little more balance by adding some industrial that generates that tax revenue without the resulting impact on infrastructure. So we did want to point that out. This development is not accepting any county incentives and obviously does not impact schools because it's not a residential use. This is our last slide, I just asked for your consideration. We've done a lot of work since the planning board, we really have. A lot of time and effort to address the concerns that were raised then. Obviously, we concur with the recommendation of staff that this is consistent with your recently adopted comprehensive plan. And Nate was talking, Commissioner Davis asked about traffic improvements. I mean, it was, it's not just traffic lights, but it's turn lanes and that sort of thing. None of that, based on the traffic that McAdams counted and the analysis, none of those improvements are necessary, simply because a lot of those have already been done. DOT had, because this is an area where a lot of recent improvements have occurred. I'm available to answer any questions, Nate, Tanner, we've got somebody from our civil engineer, if there's that type of question. We'll be glad to answer any questions you have and if the public, you know, comes up and states anything, I would like to have an opportunity to respond to that. But be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
The last question I had, just, and I know I talked about this previously, but just to confirm, because I don't have any specs of the back of the building, there's not even going to be the docks, there's not any loading docks?
Well, there'll be some loading docks for safe box trucks and things, the types of deliveries we mentioned. And we've also gone out of our way with the type C buffer, anything that is there will be buffered from the adjoining property with a more intense buffer. But obviously the type of businesses will be here, you know, mechanical contractor was one thing that was mentioned. Obviously they've got to have some way to have delivery of their equipment. You know, the new heating and air conditioning unit comes from the manufacturer, it's got to be delivered. So I can't say there won't be any loading docks, there will be, but it's just to make those deliveries. That's why we removed trucking terminal from this, so it's not a bunch of loading docks in the back in the distribution facility. That's not what this is and that's not what the intent is this. This is more like along the lines, again, of 42 Crossing, the Merritt property and the other developments that are already around there, the light industrial uses that are around there.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
I had a couple.
Sure.
And quickly tried to go through the table of uses and you'd mentioned mostly assembly, I think is what you considered. But there's some other uses on here that raise some question, it'll be the boat manufacturing and sales not so much. Bus repair and storage terminal facility, so I'm not sure.
Repair and storage terminal.
Yeah, facilities, I might be the question is what is a bus terminal to me involves a lot of vehicles yet.
I mean, a boat manufacturing.
Carpet manu, cleaning and manufacturing, chemical manufacturing, household industrial, clothing textile manufacture. It seems to me, and I thought dairy was out, but I see dairy, so there's still some extraction of earth products, I don't think that's, you're not going to have a lot of that.
We took all of that, we took all of that out and, you know, we didn't intend to miss any, but, you know, this would not be a boat manufacturing facility, but could be, you know, there could be somebody that does some repairs, but.
Yeah, so Bryson, so some of these, like, let's just take the earth extraction, was that on his list and not in red here?
Because we did take the mining out and certainly.
Yeah, yeah.
Pulled all that out and so there's, you know.
Yeah, that was.
We're not going to be mining on site.
Yeah, if there's, if there's some that we can.
Okay, yeah, the mining, yeah, okay. All right, so there's some, yeah, so mining is still, it's not in red on here. I did see the infamous mini storage on here. They had pharmaceutical manufact, so there's several manufacturing, plastics manufacturing, roof material manufacturing. So there's some, I think that maybe you didn't intend, that did get on the exclusion list, but I just wanted to make sure and maybe there's no other board. We really just had a second to go through and we had your exclusion list, but we didn't know what was left, so we're taking a look at what's left. Just something for the board to consider if there's any other uses.
Well, if there's some particular concern, we can certainly address that. I mean, we're not, this is not a manufacturing facility by.
Right.
If there's anything of, you know, noxious odors or noise or pollution, if there's anything on those lines that you'd like excluded, we're certainly open to that. I mean, you know, if there's some assemblage of pharmaceuticals or something like that, that's great business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we want to be able to hopefully accommodate that.
Yeah.
Because it could be on some, on a lower stage, you know, of that. Say for instance, it could be a pharmacy distribution, kind of small, whole wholesale type facility.
Right.
That could be there, so we didn't want to restrict our ability to do that kind of thing. But, you know, we're not looking at being a manufacturing facility, like Johnston County's been blessed with a lot of pharmacy manufacturing facilities. That's not what we're looking at here.
Okay, but anyway.
So I was trying, we were trying to be careful not to eliminate those things that are kind of small scale, that you can do on a small scale, but certainly didn't intend to include anything large scale. So if there's something of particular concern, you know, I've got Tanner here, we can add those as some additional exclusions if that's a concern. We have, we have no problem with that.
And a quick question is probably for Bryson or Jennifer, just so I'm clear, because this is conditional zoning, I just want to say it out loud, that these restrictions will run with the land, so that if any other property, I know we're trying to make sure that we're being very careful about what we allow with light industrials, so that we're not getting, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
They would definitely run with the land and we know that. And again, we tried to go through a whole look, looked through it and tried to find all of them.
It's a long list.
It's a long, and we didn't have the advantage of having it marked out on a nice sheet of paper, but.
You just had the advantage of time, we had to mark that list.
You know, in hindsight, I got to think about that next time, I need to give you, you know, present you in advance with a list with marking out. May that be the easiest way to deal with, to be honest. And we did not do that.
I think some of the ones we were questioning also have that, they'd have to have a special use permit regardless, so that's probably why I was just.
And I wasn't as concerned about them, honestly, and I was going through it and working with Tanner and his team. If it's a special use permit, we knew it had to come back anyway, so you've got to deal with those specific issues. So we were more interested in the permitted uses, that would be more of a, more of a concern.
Yeah, I think the ones I thought out and only two were special uses.
Dry cleaning laundry plants.
So, all right, I think we can talk more about those as we get further on, but I did want to, I guess we need to put the conditions up and will you go ahead and ask?
I had one quick question.
Okay.
The homes that are along Cleveland Road, are they still there and they're going to be there? They're not in any way part of this project, but they're like four.
They're not part of this project, they remain, there are a few lots there on Cleveland Road.
They're like four or five to the east, right to the east, yeah.
And some of those folks came, at least one of them came, I think, to the planning board meeting, just had questions, but did not state any concerns about this project.
Okay.
There's a few that have been converted to commercial.
Oh, right along there?
Just GB.
Okay.
Yeah, they're a very limited number of lots. We were more concerned with trying to do things for the residents down, further down Pierce Road to the west.
All right, so we have the eight conditions up. I think number one, we, the exemptions may change, but are those eight in general, I guess due to eight specifically, are those acceptable to you?
Those are acceptable to us. And we've added in addition, as you noted, in addition to these, we've added those other conditions that were on my slide, then in number one to eliminate those.
Okay. All right.
But those are acceptable to us.
Okay, that's all the questions for now.
Okay.
If we need an opportunity to come back up to.
Absolutely.
Speak again, we'll get you back up. So is there anyone else who you're wishing to speak to this, if you would, please come forward and give your name and address, please?
Good evening, my name is Kanay Kuchin, my address is 85 Fields View Drive. I am a Cheryl's Place resident, so I live in that neighborhood that the project will back up to. And so I know he mentioned the pond, but the pond is no longer there. So we've had some incidents happen and the pond is no longer there. Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak, let me start there. And as a resident on Pierce Road, my major concern is the safety and the traffic that any business will bring. I appreciate Gray Star's efforts to bring employment to Johnston County. As a Johnston County resident, I think that's great, I just don't think Pierce Road is the place for it. A lot of the comparisons that were provided to you all were on 42. And I'm sure you all are aware of the county, if you was to make it a body, 42 is a vein, Pierce Road is a capillary. It is just not meant for the type of traffic that any business will bring. And I know they did a traffic study, but I don't think that was real life. And another thing I think to consider with the traffic that I didn't hear mentioned in the study is that with the new 540 opening, if you have to go from Johnston County to another neighboring county, that's the perfect little way to get to that 540. So it will increase that traffic there. Sorry, I was taking notes as we were talking. And again, like I said, Pierce Road just doesn't accommodate that. That is a purely residential area and the updates that were made to Pierce Road in that area. In my experience, I want to say opinion, but in my experience, it's still not conducive to traffic because you, it's hard to, I live there. And to get to the Walgreens, I have to make a right go all the way around and come back down just to get to Walgreens. Now, what if that is there and there's an incident where I made a wrong turn? You can't correct it there, you have to go all the way, either Pierce Road, Cleveland Road. It's just not, it's just not an area to build a business. Like I said, the comparisons are great, I'm excited about what's happening on 42 and I'm excited about the new Publix, all of those things. It's just Pierce Road is not the place. And I'd just like to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish, anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Johnson, anything you wanted to rebut?
Just a couple of clarifications. The traffic study was based on analysis, but also the, McAdams actually did some counts, so it wasn't just based on the manual. And the distribution showed roughly, most of the, most all the traffic on Pierce Road going west is going to be motor vehicles. Maybe, you know, they, with that distribution, I think it was approximately maybe one truck trip down there. And that more likely than not, based upon the manual, would be a UPS or FedEx truck having to go down there and serve the residents. That anybody else is going to go to 40 because it's a whole lot quicker to get in and out. That's the only point I would make. Open for any other questions you may have. If there's some good, some uses of particular concern that you feel like we need to add as excluded uses under that, those conditions, we're glad to talk about that as we've narrowed it down with the table of uses that you have. So if there's something of concern, let me know and I'll be glad to have Tanner come up and speak to that and, you know, if there's any concern about it.
Any other questions, Mr. Johnson? Any other, I mean, I kind of spewed out my uses there in a hurry, but has anybody else had a chance to look through those to see if there are any other uses?
Are we talking about including these in the prohibited list?
Yes, yes, that's what I was going to say, anyone who already had to the.
Well, we talked about boat manufacturing and sales, chemical manufacturing, household industrial, dry cleaning laundry plants, extraction of earth products, we talked about that.
I think mining does cover the earth products, but I don't, I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah, there's two separate, yeah, one says extraction of earth product.
That's fine.
Yeah, so.
Number 115, but it's under special use, it's not permitted.
Okay, and I guess, like, I guess we have boat manufacturing coupled with sales. Is boat sales or repair, is that a separate category or how does that? Yeah, come on, Ms. Higle, if you want to chime in at any point, while we're throwing stuff out here, go ahead.
Sure, I mean, if there's a concern with boat manufacturing, if we want that on, added to the exclusion list, I think that's fine. If there's showroom type sales, would that be an issue?
I wouldn't think so, I'm just thinking about fiberglass and resin and that sort of.
Yeah, and I think to Mr. Johnson's point is, I don't want to exclude things if there's something scalable down to a 20, 20 to 40,000 square foot range, that I don't want to exclude that. But what I don't want is have the facility become, you know, some use that does create a noise or smell.
Right.
We understand that. I mean, on a very, very small scale, you know, there could be a little bit sale spot with maybe some repair in there that would light that up for the community, but I don't know, you know, Tanner may think differently, but they don't want that kind of use at all, so.
It's not our target business, but if there's a showroom sale, I think we'd love to maintain that ability. But really, any kind of heavy manufacturing is not what we're trying to do here at all.
All right. Any other uses or? So I'm going to try to, if nobody else has any, I'm going to try to go back through what, at least what I had and see if these are agreeable.
Go ahead.
All right, let me get back on the list. So we have boat manufacturing, I'm going to leave the sales part in there, is that?
That's agreeable, yes, sir.
Okay. Bus repair and storage terminal facility.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know if a bus will fit in there, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, I don't, the carpet cleaning, the carpet manufacturing, at least the facilities I've known, is probably not something that we want to be.
Carpet manufacturing, not carpet cleaning, I mean, I know you see the rug cleaning type businesses around, wouldn't want to limit the ability.
I think that's, I'm just talking about the manufacturing.
Which is a service to the community.
And then also exclude chemical manufacturing, household and industrial.
I don't have an issue with, I mean, sometimes I think about assemblage and manufacturing quite differently. Like if there's a group that's assembling different chemicals to create a soap or something like that.
Right, I know there's one on Highway 50 that does, I can't remember the name of it.
Chem station.
Chem station.
Yeah, chem station, which, they have products in and they basically repackage it in, so I'm not trying to exclude that.
That would be our request, if we're talking about, you know, some sort of refinement that creates, again, noxious odors or chemicals, that we have no issue excluding.
But there could be, I mean, you could foresee some folks that may have started a home business doing some soaps and candles and stuff like that and want to move into a space like this to get it out of their home. I mean, those are the kind of things that you could see here.
Could it move to special use? Could we change it to special use?
I don't think we can change the permitting requirement, so. I don't think we can change the permitting requirement. So, but I, to me, that's a different category than, I don't know, I'll look over here to this side for our staff to help guide us.
Man, I hate to interpret that from a staff basis, but-
Yeah, chemical, the, the manufacturing of it, it comes in, once again, you're, you're trying, you're taking, refining something, a product, and you're, you're changing its composition. I think what you guys are talking about more what chem station does, and you get a really good example. There, those are components that are already refined, and they're just combining them. And it's not through, it's not through manufacturing, any of the chemical processes, they're mixing those together. In, in their case, they're mixing them together in large vats, portable vats, that they then deliver to the end user, to the end line.
Right.
I think that could have the potential to be fine. I think actual processing and refinement of those things, that's where I would, I would say are aligned.
So is there, is there an SIC code or something that, that would identify chemical manufacturing?
Not, not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I, I, I think it would, it would kind of align that, you know, we can, we can term, determine however you like to determine if that's a, the use you want to include and not refine, no manufacturing, no refinement, no processing, it's simply the, if you want to say combining or merging those.
Or assemblage.
Or assemblage.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm good with what you described, chem station, and, and what he described for somebody growing their home business. I just don't want somebody with a chemical lab.
Mix, combine, assemblage, but not manufacturing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what's involved, but, but the dairy products, processing and distribution. I think distribution is, but I don't, I don't know what's in, what dairy processing.
I don't think that'd be an adequate facility for any type of dairy processing.
Okay, so.
If there's food distribution, though, you know, if, if we had-
Right.
-a ice cream distribution or cheese, we would prefer to keep that ability.
So the distribution-
Oh, that's what I was saying, it was like cheese or-
Yeah, so distribution would be, I'm good with that.
Can reduce that instead of, to, instead of processing to distribution.
Okay, so include distribution. Yeah, okay.
Again, I don't want to eliminate assemblage or something like that or something.
Yeah, yeah.
If you bring in something that's separate and you want to put it together, put it together in a gift basket or whatever, a cheese basket or whatever, we should be able to do that, but not make it.
Yep, so as, as we're spouting this stuff out, is that something that we'll, y'all will put together this final resolution that we'll, we'll agree when it'll-
They have to sign, sign it anyway.
And then come back to, uh-
We do. We have to sign the condition.
Okay, okay.
So we'll get that list, and when we have to sign off on that, Jennifer's exactly what I have now.
Okay, and so then you had extraction of earth.
You want to extract, extract, that's fine. We're not going to do that.
And then you had furniture and glass, man, those two separate ones, but furniture and glass.
I mentioned dry cleaning, and I was thinking about dry clean supplier, but Glamorama, that could be a service to the community to have a dry cleaner, so.
For a plant where you, you know, the plant where they actually do the cleaning and then-
Yeah.
-send it out to the storefronts. I mean, that, that could be something.
I think that's probably, yeah.
And helpful, so. What was that last one you mentioned, though?
I, I had talked about furniture and manufacturing, and then glass manufacturing.
Well, you know, as long as it's manufacturing, but you have a glass business in there that does replacement glass for windshield and delivers glass to folks. We don't want to eliminate that as an opportunity.
That would be more repair or-
Yeah, I think a glass manufacturing lead involves a lot of heat generation.
Yeah, and a small furniture-type place that might do furniture repair.
I think that's not-
Repair and refinishing, you could see that on a very, on a small scale here, and I'd hate to eliminate that as well. Because, again, that's a service to the community.
What else did I have? Yeah, I'm not sure. Mining inquiry, where we talked about that.
We took those out, yeah.
And then the pharmaceutical, yeah, if we can scale that to, I don't know what the pharmaceutical.
Again, I think it comes along the line of more assemblage-type stuff and rather than it does manufacturing.
Do you think they're making back in to make it more sandwich, sandwich, and actually assemblage packaging distribution?
All right, again, I've got plastics, man, manufacturing and rubber products. I'm, again, I think we get to the, all this is assembly versus actually shooting.
Assembly versus actually making it.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, I mean, again, 20,000 to 40,000 square feet, you're not going to be able to do a plastics manufacturing, so that's not what we're after.
And then the roofing material manufacturing, I don't think you're really making shingles or-
On plastics, we will have, occasionally, you'll have customers that take the plastic pellets and they're putting it into molds to create whatever they're creating. It's not stamping, it's not creating, you know, noxious vibrations, et cetera. But would something like that be acceptable?
Uh, yeah.
My son works in that.
Yeah, first of all.
Okay, yeah, 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 I'm, yeah, I'm good with that.
Again, we're talking about a multi-tenant facility. We don't want to interrupt anybody with big vibrations, but for, again, light manufacturing, we prefer to keep as much opportunity there as possible. They're usually the highest-paying jobs.
Yeah. I mean, the thing is, you used to have a nice store, you know, storefront part, but in the back, you've got the shop that does these various things on a smaller scale. That's what we're after.
Okay, well, I, believe it or not, I think that was the, that was the, the last one. I appreciate your patience as we're kind of going through that, but.
While we work with Brastin, when we sign the final agreement to the conditions, we should work with Brastin and Jennifer to get that right.
Okay, yeah.
And just based upon your direction here tonight, we'll take that back.
I trust in, in our staff's ability to make some chicken salad out of that.
Your staff's great to work with. It's honestly a problem.
Okay, good, good. We can always, you can always go back and watch it on the, the live stream.
Are there any other questions?
I, I, I've run out of them.
One of the speakers would, I think, has a question.
Oh, sure, come, come back up, yeah.
I just wonder if the plan or the proposal has any timeframe on when the units will be occupied? Because on 42, the other property that they were referencing, there's still a lot of open storefront there. So is there any stipulation on getting tenants or getting occupied in a certain time, or is it just building a building just to have it there?
So I think I saw the build out was 27. Was that the build out? I don't know about occupancy. Tanner, yeah, come up, come-
Marcus will determine that.
Yeah, if, if you'll come back up.
And if they could speak to how long, you said 2027 to have it built, or how long this will interrupt our travel as a person in the community.
Sure. Ms. Higle, you want, make a stab at that.
So the, the construction duration of this project is really just about a year, but it'll be as limited impact in terms of actual on-the-road, like, no inbound. So we won't, there will never be any, like, closure of Pierce Road or anything along those lines. So it's about a year to build, and then we hope, you know, if, if Johnston County and Greater Raleigh keeps up with the same sort of demands, we hope it's a quick lease-up, but can't make any guarantees there. You know, we would anticipate, you know, maybe we have our first tenant towards the tail end of construction, and then hopefully another couple follow after that, but it is speculative by nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions for anybody out there before I close the public discussion? All right, I will close the public discussion and call on Mr. Newton to summarize and present the planning board's recommendations, and if you would also cover the staff's recommendation.
Yes, sir. As it relates to case 25-06, planning board does offer a recommendation of denial. This was based on prior application, not the current revised application. Obviously, nothing else discussed here, not as well. Staff's recommendation was approval, and there's a statement of consistency. We, we had offered a statement of consistency to the planning board to that effect for that approval. However, you do have a statement of consistency which, for the denial offered by the planning board. And I will just recap briefly, quickly, I'll try to go through these, these, this table.
Take your time.
Yeah, it may, it's going to take more time than I think here. So boat manufacturing and sales, we will eliminate manufacturing, sales, and, and I'm going to make a blanket statement here, maybe with regard to sales, maybe everything being contained in a showroom and nothing displayed on the exterior. Would that be fair? Is that, if that'd be okay? Just to, we'll just make sure, maybe incorporate that into the conditions. So we'll eliminate manufacturing, sales with that, sales and not applying to showroom only for all types of display merchandise or goods. Elimination of the carpet manufacturing, not necessarily the cleaning. So we're keeping cleaning. Then the chemical manufacturing, once again, not the manufacturing, but the assemblage or mix, mixing or combining. Item, line item 41, which is the dairy products, processing and distribution, distribution and assemblaging, assemblage packaging would be permissible, but no processing. We had dry cleaning lawn, dry cleaning laundry plants. I'm not sure where we landed on that one, but I do know it was mentioned.
I think we decided that that was-
Acceptable.
Acceptable, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it may not be the storefront, it may be where they send it to, to actually dry clean it.
And we do have the elimination of line 49, which is the extraction of earth products. Obviously, 58, furniture manufacturing, this is going to be based on scale, which is not large-scale distribution or large-scale manufacturing or distribution. So you would be looking more refinishing and small custom items. Glass manufacturing is eliminated, does not eliminate repair or replacement. And line 85, metal fabrication plants, including boiler and tank works. I'm not sure if we got that one, but I had a question marked there.
I don't have any issues with that.
I did not have that one marked, and I'm not sure about the, the boiler and tank works, but I know metal fabrication facilities that are located in similar places.
Similar process. Elimination of line 86, which is your mining quarry and operate, mining quarry operation, which, once again, is special use, that one might be applicable, but we're just going to make a note of it. Pharmaceutical manufacturing distribution, we will limit to assemblage, packaging and distribution only, therefore eliminating that, that large-scale manufacturing. Plastic, limit this to plastic manufacturing, which is nine, line 99, that's plastic and rubber products, and this would be limited to heat press or heat molding, heat press molding. Elimination of line 111, roofing materials manufacturing, and then all other items that are currently already marked or indicated in red.
Then I will, I will ask the applicant now, just with, with the ability to take a look at this, once we get the final wording, that you're, those are all acceptable?
Generally, they are until we see the final word, but yeah, in, in general, they're, they're acceptable.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Mr. Newton? All right, thank you. All right, I will close the hearing and turn it over to the board for any additional discussion. And/or a motion.
Did he indicate what staff recommendation was?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The staff recommended approval.
They, they recommended approval.
Okay. My fault, I, I didn't hear that.
It was hard, he said, he said the planning board denied and the staff approved. I was, I was confused, too. I had to get back and retrace his, his words and my thoughts.
I'm sensitive to the concerns of the folks living close by, and, you know, you try to think through all the ins and outs. Cut-through road is a possibility, but I was out there recently to look at this site, and if I were coming from Garner, I'd stay on Cleveland Road from 50. It's a quicker ride to this site than to come down 50 to over. So hopefully that will alleviate some of the cut-through traffic that was shown concern. Towards that end, with all of the misogyny of the uses, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt a resolution with a statement of consistency as presented in the staff report, that proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest, and approve the rezoning request with the conditions as discussed at length.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it. I want to, to add to that. I had some strong concerns based on some of the feedback we got with the previous meetings, and I really appreciate all the feedback that we continue to get. I, I feel if this were further down Pierce Road and it was more in the middle and, and not at a already busy intersection with contiguous commercial properties, I would have further heartburn of it. And the fact that they, you know, are reducing the, the impact of large 18-wheelers and things like that, I do appreciate it. Sounds like they listen to what the, the citizens said in the surrounding community. So for that, I, I thank y'all. So for that reason, with it being right there on the corner and just in the middle of, of where the flex industrial commercial building is coming at 40 and 42, I'll, I'll second Commissioner Godwin's motion.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? No, I would just add that I think this is what we envision with the conditional zoning, is the ability to sit down and work through differences and maybe not satisfy all the residents, but at least mitigate some of their concerns. And I agree that if I'm coming out of there, I'm going Cleveland and running up to 50 rather than that way. I mean, there's going to be, I don't know, it's going to be zero, but there's going to be some trucks that go the other way. But I'm sure if it's like my neighborhood, there's a lot of Amazon and UBS and FedEx-
That's right.
-trucks running through there, so. Any other comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is a continuation of the ballpark discussion. So I will, is it, we have anybody to, to introduce now? See, we have Mr. Scott here to answer any questions, but I'll turn it over to the board for comments on that and see where we wind up on this.
Well, I'll start it off.
Somebody's got to.
Yeah, exactly. So I have heard from constituents a lot of discussion about this project in both favors and for and against. And I've listened and I, and I can, I definitely can understand, if, I thought that this was public money that was just simply being spent for a ballpark, just to help some team make money, then I would absolutely be opposed to this. But having, tried to do a little research and understand what it is that Smithfield is asking for, they're, they're, they are not, this is not unprecedented that a municipality, a, a local government provides a facility, whether it be a baseball park, a football stadium. It even happens at the NFL and major league levels where cities build out stadiums that they then turn around and lease to a company. So the, the way I look at it is Johnston County is in need of more activities for families to go to. We, we, we could use an event venue like this where we could see, you know, kids come to the ballgame, families come to the ballgame, whether it be just a Tobs event or a college event or a high school event. But the, the, the way I also look at it is, as an economic engine for, for the county, I asked Mr. McLamb today to run some numbers based on what, what Wilson provided for us at, at both exactly what they're providing now, Mr. Scott provided these numbers for us earlier today, and also at a, a more conservative guess, that maybe they don't have the, quite the success that have, have had in, in Wilson. And so the estimate came back from Mr. McLamb that if we were to appropriate the request of $2 million to help build this ballpark, that between sales tax and hotel occupancy, that it would take somewhere between 10 to 16 years to get that money back. So a lot of times where, when we're talking about parks and, and things that bring a quality of life to people, there is no return on any investment. It is simply just to do the right thing, to have a place for- It is simply just to do the right thing, to have a place for people to congregate and have a good time. In this situation, we're able to actually recoup that investment over time. And so I was, I think Fleming Stadium, where the Tobs currently play, is built in nineteen thirty-nine, so it's eighty-six years old. So in eighty-six years, there have been so many memories, so many events, so much economic activity that's been around that stadium. I can imagine what, what their commissioners or their people who were thinking about building this ballpark, there was probably some pushback and probably thought this was a crazy idea to build a baseball, you know, field in nineteen thirty-nine. But looking at the numbers that Mr. McLamb basically kind of reinforced that I was thinking, if, if we think long-term and we're thinking that this, this could be an economic engine for tourism, to bring people to our county, to showcase what Smithfield and Johnston County are all about, we have the choice of not doing this and having two million dollars in the, in the fund balance, a million this year and a million that we could budget for next year. And then in twenty years, we could say, well, we still have that two million dollars plus interest in the bank. Or in twenty years, we could say, we've got double what we put into it, and we've got a baseball stadium, and we've got twenty years' worth of memories of families and events that we helped to, to kick off right here tonight. So having said all that, I just think that it's a great opportunity, and I feel like if we, if we don't do it, it'll be one that we, that we hate, that we missed out on. And at the end of the day, I believe that the county's tax coffers will be made whole and by, by multiple times over, and, and it will be money that we can get from tourism, from people who are outside of Johnston County. So the next time we're looking at having to redo a tax rate, there's actually another stream of revenue coming in that we don't have now, that, that can replace one or two of those pennies that we are fighting over when it comes budget time. So that's my kickoff.
All right, next.
Okay, I'm going to give my two points. So this is, my heartstrings want to say, absolutely want this for the county. You know, we, we just voted to really kick off a regional park in the Cleveland area this morning, and so, you know, adversely, I would love to see us bring something new to this side of the county for families to go out, enjoy, enjoy the beautiful weather we have in North Carolina, all the talent we have. So my heartstrings are absolutely there. My headstrings also feel like I spent my allowance this morning on a regional park. So, you know, taking into consideration, this may not be something anybody can answer, but you know, just in, in national stats, things like the major league, you know, baseball has reported that, you know, ten to fourteen percent decline in attendance, although we're seeing things like the Savannah Bananas bring, you know, massive crowds. Is there, and this again is probably not something that you guys can answer, but is there an opportunity for us to bring something like that to Johnston County? I just want to make sure that if we're spending this money, the constituents agree, we agree that we want this to be bigger than just a, a local baseball team. And I think that, that to me is kind of a dividing line. Are we bringing something truly that is, is going to be fun for all, you know, for generations to come, knowing what we know about, you know, the attendance at sports and things like that? I don't know, those are my thoughts. I would love to know that this can be something bigger for our, our citizens than just a baseball field.
If I could, yeah, I'll jump back in.
You definitely know more than I do.
So I would say that you have to start somewhere, and this is, this, as things go, this is a relatively small start. And, and if, if Smithfield were coming to us and they were thinking, let's think about starting a baseball program, and we're going to get some team that has not existed yet and start it out, and let's see what happens, I would be, I would be iffy. But this is a proven entity of a, of a program that has existed for, I forget what they said this morning, eighty, eighty years, or something like that. But, you know, there's a formula, there's a, there's a plan already in place. We know that it works, we've seen it just down the road in Wilson. We saw the, I mean, easily, they sold out several nights at twenty-five, twenty-five-hundred-seat stadium, and this, this was only about fifteen, eighteen, eighteen hundred. So I do believe that, that what we're looking at is something that's already been proven. And, and I would love to see something like you're talking about, but I just feel that we're going to have to start somewhere.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead, that's all.
Well, I'll have to ask the question, if this is such a good investment, why is it still in Wilson? You know, and, but philosophically, I have a different reason to have apprehension, because ultimately, this is a for-profit private enterprise, and we're talking about basically subsidizing a business that's coming here. And I don't see that as taxpayers' responsibility. If it's such a great investment, then there'll be private investors that are supporting this, as opposed to taxpayer money. And I also look at it from a standpoint, I have nothing against baseball or sports or anything else, I think they're all great for, for your neighborhood and your community if it's available to you. But I don't see it as a role of government to bring it. We have that park this morning, I noticed, so well, we put money in a park. Well, we actually had that on a priority list that we agreed to at our planning retreat back in March. It was a priority for the county, and we already had an investment in it, so we, we were staying true to what we said was our primary mission. That's not a profit enterprise there. Any Midley Park's not going to generate revenue, but they're going to generate enjoyment and memory for the citizens who do use it. I'm concerned from the standpoint that we cut the tax rate as low as we thought we could and still be able to meet our obligations going forward. That capitalist had nineteen priorities on it, and quite frankly, you, you look at everything, and there are needed priorities. Buildings for the county government because services, demand on services has exploded. We're talking about having to borrow money into the billions of dollars to do that. And I'm concerned about, yeah, it's only two million dollars now. It's going to take us anywhere from ten to sixteen years to recover that. Well, we may need that two million dollars in that ten to sixteen years, because we may have an emergency come up or something else that's going to dip into our cash flow. So from that standpoint, I, I would say that we do not have enough incentive to make that, take that kind of risk. And because it is a private, for-profit entity, I think that it's best served by the private sector.
All right, Mr. Chairman, here's.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've studied a lot about this, and I, and I can see both arguments and see both sides. But that same logic could be applied to a lot of different things. The same logic could be applied to the shooting range that we just put money into. I mean, you know, if it's such a great business, why didn't, you know, we, we could argue that on a lot of different things, but sometimes it turns out to be quality of life and the opportunity for our citizens to have things to do, and our children, our families to be able to have a place to go. And I, and I agree with Commissioner Rose of the memories that are made and so forth. You know, I see the, the benefits that the community part brings to Smithfield. And, and, you know, while I was not probably a huge proponent of that park back in the day when it was built, Mr. Scott smiling back there, we were, probably had some of those discussions at that point, but, but it has turned out to be a huge benefit to the citizens of the county, not just Smithfield. There's people from all over this county come and use that park, they use the aquatic center, there's people from surrounding counties and even regions that come and compete there for all the different things that they host there. So that being said, yeah, you could, you can apply that same logic and say, well, you know, is it really our responsibility to provide quality of life type things? And I, I think the answer is yes. You know, I do think that our citizens want to have things to do for their families. And, and I don't think that we should have a situation where if you want to go do something like that, you have to go somewhere else. We don't have anything like that here in Smithfield, and we don't have anything like that in Johnston County. So based on the fact that that, that money will be returned to the county coffers, plus a, a good amount, depending on how many years you go out, I, I don't think it's a bad investment at all. I mean, I think it's, it goes back to what I said this morning about planting trees. You know, sometimes you got to go, you got to be visionary and you got to plant a tree, and you got to go out there and, and make something happen that's going to benefit our families, going to give people things to do. And, and so with that being said, I, I think this is one of those opportunities. And, and I agree wholeheartedly, we're not building something from the ground up, they've got an eighty-year history, they're already doing it, Towne Smithfield's willing to take the lead on it, they're going to be responsible for it, they're going to maintain it. This is a one-time investment, and I look at it as partnering with the town on an economic development project, is the way I'm viewing this, and we've done it numerous times before with other towns in, in the county. You know, we've helped other towns with projects that they wanted to do, and I think this is something that's important in Smithfield. And therefore, as, as a result of all of that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this, with this process, at least get it on the table so we can have further discussion.
All right, we have a motion, and I'm assuming that's with Mr. Scott, the million dollars this fiscal year.
Yes, sir, that's correct. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. Yes, yes.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will now open it up for any other discussion.
Well, I hadn't weighed in. You know, Jesse Helms was known as Senator No, and some have said I'm a little to the right of Jesse Helms. But I've given this a lot of thought back and forth, I've heard from a lot of constituents, and Bill makes a good point, and I tend to side with Bill on a lot of issues such as this. But at the same time, I think about the quality of life and the situation with the Tobs and Wilson was beyond their control. It wasn't their activities that caused that, it was the bigger things with the movement of the mud cats down to Wilson precipitated all that. And we got a great history and, and legacy here of baseball, from major league players to, I even had a cousin that played with the Twins from Kinley. But towards that end, I'm, I'm going to vote for this. I think it's, it's the right thing to do at this point.
Right, anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted, Commissioner Stovall, I appreciate everything you said and, and really don't disagree with, with any of it, but the, the one thing I did want to say was, the city of Wilson is losing the Tobs, and, and the reason is because of this minor league team. But if, if they had thought that baseball was a bad idea, they wouldn't be putting eighty-five million dollars into a downtown, into their downtown stadium. So, so although they're not able to keep both, they're putting all their eggs in the new minor league stadium basket, and they didn't want to keep the Fleming Stadium as anything that they had to keep up. They saw what the Tobs brought, and speaking with the Wilson people, they, they hate to see them go, but they're moving to a much bigger project and, and willing to spend eighty-five million dollars on the next project, so.
Well, if this was a different time, I might agree with you, but we're coming off a tax reevaluation that basically saw every taxpayer in this county had increase in their property taxes. And I've had so many constituent economies that I can no longer afford to live in the county I was born in because of, basically, so what the county commissioners have done to us. Now, to me, if we spend money on something that a lot of people consider to be a, a frivolous activity, because it's not something that's normally the, the business of the, of the county commissioners, then that casts us in light, do you really care about the cost to the everyday citizens here? Is that additional cost to the taxpayers or the memories they're going to make, is that paying the tax bill every year? But, you know, it, it's just a bad time from a timing standpoint. That's the thing that I see here, that if it was a different time and the financial situation was better than it is now, and we had just come off a tax reevaluation that imposed a huge demand on all of our taxpayers, and we're still looking at similar type increases in the near term on water and sewer. I said, opposing something on here that appears is not a mandate or something that is, is, is a must-have with a like-have, to me, you got to deal with the must-have first and demonstrate you can do that responsibly before you start spending money on it. That would be nice to have that. That's just the way I am, so for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
All right.
I guess it's my turn to speak.
All right, I can go, if you want me to go before you.
I've had a lot of heartburn, a lot of, because I see both sides of this. Ever since this came before us for the past two months, it's been a lot. I was like, I never thought I'd have stress over baseball. But it's because, as the point of Mr. Shavell, of taking the taxpayers' money very seriously. I don't take that lightly, because it's our money and it's your money, and I take it serious. However, I do know that you also don't want to lose an opportunity, and you never know if that opportunity is going to come again. And I do think about the citizens of the county and how we are a growing county, and how that quality of life, people are moving here, and at the same time, they want to be able to work and play here. And I feel like this would be an opportunity to be able to have that partnership with the town to provide an opportunity. Like I said, as Mr. Scott talked about this morning, is it is going directly to the Towne of Smithfield. The Towne of Smithfield is managing this baseball park. So if the Tobs pull out, we're still left with a very nice baseball park that could still be used and utilized in the future, and that the money will go directly to the actual structure of it. It's not going for the design, it's not going for all the bells and whistles, so to speak, it's helping actually build it. So with that, and like I said, several of the, the quality of life and the memories and all the things to help work and play and bring in tourism for the county in support.
All right, so I'll weigh in. I think that the Tobs and its ownership are proven entities. I think that there's no denying that success they've had, there's no denying the community involvement they bring. You mentioned, you talked this morning about the other things they bring with it, with the collegiate baseball and high school baseball, even football that they bring, and then also the opportunity in the spare time that's left, Smithfield will be able to program. So there's a lot of great things that they do. But the problem for me is, unlike other economic development packages that we approve, we are being repaid by the entity through their taxes, but we're basically, almost say rebate, I know we'll get some looks over here from our management. But this is going to a, for a private entity to make a profit. That, that's not, I get that everybody wants to make profit if you're in business, but I'll go back to the timing that we've got, Clayton High School, that we don't know exactly what the needs are, we know what the budget was, we don't know where we're going to wind up. Right now, it's looking like we're going to spend five, ten billion more than, than what was initially projected on that. We've got our own facilities that we've talked about, we've talked about our list of priorities that we had. But the biggest thing, Commissioner Rose had mentioned other places, NFL teams, major league baseball teams, that, that had built stadiums with public dollars. And if you go back and listen to those discussions, it's a pretty heated debate on whether this public money should be spent on those facilities, and it's usually not seventy-five percent four and twenty, it's, it's close. So, so I see, I see the, the good things, maybe this is one I lack vision on, but I do see, if, if anybody's going to be successful, I think we've got the, the ownership of the Tobs who can pull that off. But overall, for me, is public dollars going to a private for-profit entity, is, given the financial situation that Commissioner Stovall described it wherein, I just can't support it at, at this time. And if it does go forward, I definitely will support it, but at this time, I can't.
Just some clarification, this money is to build a facility for that private entity, but it's not going to the private entity, just creating the place for them to be.
But he is going, yes, but he is going to charge people for that, and he's not in, he's not in it for nothing.
He's going to break the benefit from it.
Yeah, so he, so that's, that's my, yeah, I agree, the facility will be Smithfield's facility, but at the bottom line is, the dollars are going into Smithfield's coffers, they're going into his pocket, and then maybe there's a rental, and I don't know what the agreement is. But anyway, that's where I stand, so if anybody else has any other comments before the call and question.
Yeah, I, I do think it is important to clarify that this allocation is to the Towne of Smithfield. It is not to the Tobs. This is to build a facility that will serve the citizens of the county and Smithfield, of course, but all the rest of the county, with the thoughts that the, the generation of tax revenue coming from this will, will more than pay back what the county's going to invest in this. So I just think it's very important to say, we're not subsidizing a for-profit business, we're, we're, we're joining with the Towne of Smithfield on, on an economic development project.
And the last thing I would just like to say, to make sure it's, it's clear, is, is that with this, with this, we're creating a steady stream of money that will go into Johnson County's revenue bucket that won't be property tax dollars.
Correct.
That won't be, like, once this money, whether it's 10 to 16 years, we're thinking long-term, whether, if this park was here another 86 years, just like the Fleming Stadium, we're talking 10 to 20, maybe 30 million dollars that's put back into Johnston County that didn't have to be charged a property tax. So that, that's why I, I feel like if we, if people understand that, they, they would think we're investing their money wisely, and so.
So I've not thought of it that way, I'm glad you, you put it out there like that. So with that being said, and I hate to use the word earmark, but with the, the revenue that is generated once the county is essentially paid back, what is the, the plan for that money, or is there an opportunity for us to earmark it, for lack of a better word, just the same as we do, like PUV tax dollars, to make sure that it's, for lack of a better word, a like-kind exchange? You know, when we take land out of the PUV, we take the money from the, the taxes that are paid in rear to go buy more conservation land. So additionally, with the revenue that this brings in, could we, and this may be a question I should look at Jennifer, pretend chats here, is it something that we can say, this revenue now is going to go back into our, our funds for more parks and rec and things like that? I guess I would just like to know that it's gonna...
I don't know how you could earmark.
I don't know how you could do it, because...
Yeah, I don't think so.
When you think about things like Eastfield and other large, even the outfit that was approved tonight, all that coming onboard is gonna change that sales tax.
Well, sales tax goes into the general fund.
Right, I was just trying to...
Everything that goes to the general fund helps keep the tax rate as low as possible, because it's a, it's a cumulative process of all the things that go into that fund. And then based on what that general fund looks like and what our tax revenues are, is how we end up reaching our property tax rate. Mr. Hester, is that, is that correct? Yes.
To me, the real advantage is the people coming here for the ballgames and other activities, they're gonna be spending money.
Spending money in local businesses and restaurants and things like that, I completely get, I was just in my brain trying to make it, make one hand wash the other, for lack of a better word, oh.
I will say, I had conversations with Mr. Mullins, Mr. Aaron Mullins, our director of the Tourism Authority, and he was here this morning for the presentation that Mr. Scott made. But he, he seems very, and I don't wanna put words into his mouth by any stretch, but he seems very confident that this, this will bring in a, a very marketable economic factor that the county and the Town of Smithfield can both benefit. And when, when we collect sales tax, remember, every town in the county gets a portion of it based on their ad warrant. The county gets 80%, the rest of it's divided up. So just like Carolina premium outlets, it's located in Smithfield, but Clayton gets tax money off of it, Benson gets tax money off of it. So I think it's really important for people to understand how that works, because it is, you would think because it's here, it would stay here, but it doesn't. It does not.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna go ahead, I believe I heard Commissioner Goddard said call the question over there, so we're gonna call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries, five to two. All right, on to the next item, manager report and comments. All right. Board reports and comments, as I started over here this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with you. Just one additional item from this morning's report is that we are continuing to have conversations with the behavioral health urgent care, Ms. Slusser and Mr. Hester and Dr. Peterson, everybody, we're working with Alliance on that. So more to come, we're excited about the process, progress that we've made, and I think we're, we're getting very close to being able to provide some for the citizens of this county. And everybody will agree that, that mental health is a huge crisis for not only our county, but our state and our nation.
I think I said everything I had this morning.
All right.
Ditto.
It's going fast.
Everybody talked out.
Yep.
Commissioner Stovall?
I've been out saying anything else.
You're respected by a lot of people, Bill. Tonight about 6 o'clock, the harvest moon came up, called a super moon, so I encourage everybody to, when they go out to look at their green light, look up at the super moon tonight.
All right. So I have a table of uses I'd like to review one more time. I do not have anything else to add, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.